Welcome and good afternoon. This is a special meeting of the City Council, the City of Morro Bay. It is Tuesday, January 14th, 3:30 PM. We're at 209 Surf Street in Morro Bay, of course. Happy New Year to you all. Hope you had a great holiday season. We do have a quorum of the council members present. And our special meeting today is Advisory Board Interviews. And at this time, I will open up a public comment. If any members of the public wish to come forward and speak on the agenda, please do so now. Hearing nothing but silence, no footsteps whatsoever, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. These are our Advisory Board Interviews. Today, we have Planning Commission interviews, Public Works Advisory Board interviews, Citizens Oversight, Finance Advisory Committee, or CFAC, Recreation and Parks Commission, and the Tourism Business Improvement District. And for the ET bid, we will divide that into two different interviews, one for the vacation rental position and one for the hotel year with 22 rooms or less, with a term ending January 21st, 2024. The format, for those of you in the audience that are applicants, is fairly simple. First, relax. We don't bite. It's an easy process. Each council member, when I call up the group, allow you to be seated. We'll ask you one question. We ask that you limit your answers to one minute or less, if humanly possible. That will help us get through the meeting on time. We will also ask you to start with a brief opening statement. We do have your curriculum vitae, or the information that you filled out, that you sent to, when you actually signed up to come to the interview. And we also have a number of CVs for a number of you as well. But just a short statement of your background and why you're interested in the position. So with that, if we're ready, council, you're ready to go? I'll go ahead and invite up our Planning Commission applicants. This is for one vacancy, for a four-year term ending January 31st, 2024. We initially had five applicants, but we now only have three. Two have withdrawn. So I'll invite up Laurel Barton, Ronald Bavasso, and Joseph Ingraffia. Come on up here, right up here. I didn't tell you where to go, did I? Find a seat, any seat.
May I just add a couple of comments before we begin?
Let me just give some instructions also. The mics before you, there's a button on the bottom, a long button that says, "Push." If your light's green, we can hear you. Notice I'm close to the mic, and that's for the benefit of those people that are watching, so that they can also hear your answers and any statements that you make. Yes, council member McPherson?
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome everybody and say thank you for applying. And to not feel bad if you are not selected, because I know how it feels myself. And oftentimes, we have a lot of qualified candidates, or candidates that we may not feel fit the qualifications of the job. And you shouldn't feel bad about it. Try again. There may be another position. I just want you to know that we can't appoint all of you, so I just wanted to say that.
Appreciate that. And just some instructions for council at the end of the interviews. You do have ballot sheets for the vacancies that are noted. For instance, for Planning Commission, one vacancy, you're to select one individual. Now, you also have the right, if you don't feel any applicant is qualified, to not select an individual. I just want to call that out. That's nothing personal, but we do want to make sure that we have appropriate representation on all of our bodies. And sometimes, council feels that not everybody is qualified. So with that, I don't want to end on a negative. I think council member Davis is going to say something positive.
Absolutely. Are we now adopting the policy that Barbara proposed earlier in the year, that we also choose a second person?
Automatically, the second person, second highest vote getter would be the alternate, per the new policy advisory handbook?
I'm sorry, I don't recall it being written quite that way, but the council could appoint an alternate for a three- to six-month period, and they would be asked to attend meetings, but would not be a participating member. And then if a vacancy occurred during that time, they could be appointed to fill, they could fill that spot.
And if you're in agreeance, my assumption would be it would be the individual with the second highest number of votes. Would that be okay? Great, thank you for that reminder. That was positive. With that, welcome. Glad to have you here. Thank you for applying for the boards. I'm going to flip a coin. And I'll ask Mr. Bavasso, and if I said that incorrectly, please correct me. Mr. Bavasso, a short introduction, a minute or less, of why you'd like to be on the Planning Commission and why you feel qualified, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. On behalf of all the candidates, I'd like to thank the City of Morro Bay for giving us the opportunity to participate. Myself, I have, as you may see from my information, I have two bachelor's degrees, one in economics, one in regional planning. I earned a law degree when I was nearly 50 in Sacramento. I've been in construction trades and construction management most of my adult life. I spent 40 years in the business. I live in Morro Bay for about the last two years, and I get restless now that I'm retired. And I think I'd like to put some of my training, experience, and education to use for the city. But I think you have an easy job today, as far as this Planning Committee advisory, because I think all the applicants were strong, and myself included. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Barton, welcome. Push your button, yeah. Do you get a green light?
Oh, there we go.
There you go, and close to the mic.
I thought it was the pale green. Okay. I'm Laurel Barton. I'm a recent transplant from the valley to Morro Bay, and I am loving it. I've been here for a little over a year, but I've owned my house for about five years, so it just took me a little while to get here. I am, my background is in local government, education, and nonprofit work. I did a lot of grant writing over the years, and it took me across those three types of I worked a lot in engineering departments and worked with planners, and so I feel like my background and my experience and my interest is well-suited to the Planning Commission. I'm glad to be here. I'm glad we have so many strong candidates. So that's me.
Great, welcome again. And Mr. Ingraffia, welcome.
Well, thank you. I found the last four years amazingly fulfilling and also a lot of fun. And, you know, I might just add that as a lawyer, one time or another, you always fantasize about having some sort of a judicial career. And when I first applied for this, I had no idea that it was a quasi-judicial body. And I thought I was just going to be advising people, which I pretty much done my entire life. So I was very pleased when I actually found out that it was a quasi-judicial body. It's been just really fun. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you all. And with that, I'm going to randomly start to my right with council member Heller, starting us off, if you would, sir, with a question. And again, I'll rotate, but Mr. Ingraffia, if you could start for us. Jeff, go ahead, please.
So I can ask any question I want?
Any question you want. You get one question, you bet.
No, I thought we were going to have prescribed questions, so.
Okay. So Joe, you've been on the Planning Commission for four years.
This would be a question for the whole group.
Oh, okay.
That each would answer, yes.
Thank you for that clarification. I'm new at this. The, I'd like, yeah, it's on. I'd like a little more detail about your planning background relative to the planning that's required here as part of the city.
Oh, I have to be honest, I have absolutely no background formally in planning, sort of engaged by municipality. Certainly, planning in the sense of what I had in my previous careers as an attorney and as an assistant director in film production, which is a great deal of planning, but nothing formally as it relates to zoning or development or that sort of thing. I was a real estate broker for a brief period of time, and I was working with some commercial developers, but that's as much as my background specifically relates to that. So I'm afraid, for better or worse, I'm going to have to stand on my record for the last four years.
Great. Ms. Barton?
In the course of my work for cities, I spent a lot of time working with planners and also attending many, many council meetings and hearing the work of the planners and in the presentation of different items that had gone to Planning Commission and now were before the council. Just the way that offices are set up usually in a city hall, the planners and the engineering types are generally mixed together, and so you spend a lot of time with people who are thinking about planning issues. And that's the discussion that happens, like at the water cooler and, you know, wherever. You get kind of bathed in it. So it's not a strange thing. It wasn't necessarily my particular job, but you pick it up, so.
Thank you. And Mr. Bavasso?
As I mentioned, I have a bachelor's degree in economics and also a bachelor's degree in regional planning. When I graduated college, the first job I got was digging ditches with a shovel in construction. It was the only job I could find. I worked in different trades for a few years, and one day, one of my bosses saw me reading the New York Times, and he said, "You're going in the office." And I worked in management, construction management ever since. I earned my, as I mentioned, my law degree. I was nearly 50 years old. I got it in self-defense, because planning, development, real estate, it became so litigious that Monday morning, you'd say, you'd call up the sheet rocker and say, "Where are you? It's 10 o'clock." You're sp- well, my lawyer didn't get a chance to look at my contract yet. So I went to school part-time, took me nearly seven years. At the time, I was planning director and construction director for the capital, Pennsylvania's capital, city of Harrisburg. I've worked in seven different states and built everything from car wash for NASA to $53 million dormitory for Pennsylvania higher education system. As I said, I worked in the trades. I know how to make things work, I think, because I started at the bottom. And I would really like the opportunity to give a little back to the community. They've been good to me here.
Great, thank you. That'll take us to council member McPherson, and I feel like I know you now, so I'm going to start with you, Laurel.
Okay.
Use your first names.
Okay, yeah, thank you all for being here. Here's my question for you. Providing affordable housing is a key issue for the City of Morro Bay, as obviously for the entire state of California. How would you describe the Planning Commission's role in helping to bring that about?
The Planning Commission's role, and you're right, it's a key, key issue in many parts of the state, but especially, I think, along the coast and in some of our bigger cities. The Planning Commission's role is to help come up with possible ways to fit some affordable housing into our existing community and new places as well, and to make those recommendations to the council to approve going forward. Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Well, interestingly, a proposal recently came before the Planning Commission, and it was a real eye-opener. I certainly support affordable housing with enthusiasm, but it does bump up against some deeply-held core values in the community, because what we're seeing is that these, the projects require perhaps waivers on height limitation, various exceptions to parking that create other sets of problems. They're also amenable, but it requires some thoughtful approach and also some considerations probably as to the speed at which the change is applied, so that it can be properly assimilated into the community, because they're going to have to, some sacrifices are going to have to be made, and they should be made. And the public has to be informed about what they are and to what degree.
Thank you. And Ron?
One of the most important things in public housing is who's going to pay for it. In economics, I realize when I graduated high school and college, and when, just because a person has economics background doesn't mean they can balance a checkbook. The money for those kind of projects, it comes from a variety of sources. People don't want to let it go until they have some assurance that it's going to work. And part of that assurance is where are you going to put it, and are the people in the neighborhood going to cooperate with your decisions? It's, you know, when this, on your side of the table, you're damned if you do and damned if you don't. Half the people think you're doing a wonderful job, and the other half would love to get rid of you in a heartbeat. But it's, you just have to move forward. You have to research the projects, you have to research the locations, research the funding, the finances. It's a lot of footwork.
Good. Thank you. Takes us to council member Davis. And we'll start again, Ron, I'll start with you this time. Council member Davis?
Yeah, I'm going to take Marla's question one step further. What is the first step that the City of Morro Bay should take to increase our supply of workforce housing?
You have to identify, I guess you'd have to identify the need, and then you'd have to identify the location, then you'd have to identify the financing, and then you'd have to find out the flow of the community interest and cooperation. It becomes political and economic, and you have to have the press and other people behind you, the merchants, and it's a community effort. It's just not something that you circle some unused vacant area over by the gas station and say, "Boy, this would be a good place to put public housing." It's a lot of work, a lot of. In Harrisburg, we knocked down a few neighborhoods and put up houses for first-time homeowners. And it's difficult, because the neighborhoods are usually not the best, so you have to be able to attract people to the neighborhoods. Well, you don't have that problem so much in Morro Bay, but, you know, public housing, are they going to have a view of the rock? Well, you know, maybe, for a million dollars, but it's just so complicated and convoluted that I don't think there are any pat answers.
Okay, Laurel?
One of the things that I've been pleased to see in Morro Bay is looking at the inclusion of more ADUs as a possible way to put in additional affordable housing on a small scale, so it doesn't necessarily just stick out. It's, you know, tucked in to a neighborhood. I was noticing, as I was reading the minutes of past meetings, there have been a number of different changes here and there. Lots are being developed that maybe were not the first choice 20 years ago, but now they're coming up for development, and looking at those as possible places to put some affordable housing. There are, of course, the choices around large-scale affordable housing, and I think, given the size of Morro Bay, that it would be preferable to be able to kind of tuck it in here and there and not necessarily do a big development all at once. Just, I just think there are ways to do that, but it may not be. I don't know the exact numbers, but I know there's a huge need when you think about who works in the restaurants and, you know, the different businesses here that support tourism. It's, you know, there has to be a balance.
And Joe, thank you.
I agree, there really is a pressing need. With respect to affordable housing, I'd like to think we're talking about market-based affordable housing. And I really buy into the notion that every community has to bear its fair responsibility, its share of affordable housing, rather than, as is typically in the past, affordable housing got relegated to less affluent areas. Probably the first question is, how much affordable housing would be our fair share? And then where to put that in terms of increased density? And you sort of have to look at the entire area of Morro Bay and decide on the basis of that. And also with, I'm also really enthusiastic about these accessory dwelling units as another basis of affordable housing, except as I was recently reading the latest legislative attempt at Sacramento of four units on a piece of property within the same footprint, which is a good idea in some areas of the state and a less good idea in other places of the state. So I'm not so enthusiastic about a one-size-fits-all approach to affordable housing, particularly accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Council member Addis, and Laurel, I'll start with you this time. Is that, did I start with you last time? Trying to, see, I've already forgotten. We'll let you start then.
Well, my question is almost the same, but I do want to thank my colleagues, because a year ago, we weren't really talking about housing. And I've just seen a shift in thinking over the past year, so I'm glad that our minds are on this. My question, as I wrote it, was, what is your perspective on the need for housing, and how should Morro Bay rise to the challenge of housing all with dignity? So I think you've mostly answered that, but if there's any last pieces that you want to answer or add, in particular, to the idea of housing all people with dignity here?
I had a friend who was living in Portland a few years back, and I went to visit her. And I was really intrigued, because as I, as we walked around, I could see that there were oftentimes little extra houses on people's lots, and I thought, huh, this is interesting. I hadn't seen that before. And in Portland, not only were they using it for providing housing, but they were also using that to push the idea of rapid transit and getting more people closer to where the buses would take them to work and wherever. And I thought, gee, that was, that was very clever, I thought, because otherwise, sometimes it's hard to get people to take buses, and that, you know, we could probably use some help with that, too. I happen to live near where the buses come and go from the backside of the park, and so I see people there, but I don't see so many houses right there. So, you know, it's kind of interesting how you can use that to push another agenda.
Thank you. Ron?
You know, it's not, it's not just about building units for people to live in. It's a more, it's a multifaceted approach. You have to build a community. You have to make sure that all the stores are rented and all the garbage cans are empty and the streets are clean and, you build a community, a strong community, and somehow the solutions, I don't want to say they arrive magically or they appear magically, but there's different ways of approaching it. One town in California, I read, they decided that it was much less expensive for them to pay people, pay people's rent than it was to build tract homes on a piece of property that maybe could be utilized for a different purpose. So there's really not one solution. And as an advisor to the planning board, nobody's really going to ask me my opinion. But as a citizen, I would try to find out other people's opinions and bring them to the board. Joe?
Yeah, I think I could go on for an hour on this subject. Morro Bay has, it's difficult in Morro Bay, because there's not a great deal of undeveloped land, and the land that there is is so expensive. Certainly, building smaller footprints to help reduce and making it less of a requirement that we house our cars in garages or even parking spaces, because if you examine how expensive the dirt that sits under our cars while it's parked there 20 hours a day, it's phenomenal. And I have a feeling that these accessory dwelling units would go a very long way towards providing really decent housing on a small square footage basis. But I'm also thinking, and I voiced this before occasionally at the Planning Commission, that because of the limitations in Morro Bay, I wonder if we couldn't sometimes join forces with some of the other local communities and combine our financial resources and find some spots where the land is less expensive, but it's still a very reasonable commuting distance to Morro Bay and Cayucas and San Luis Obispo. Because again, we're in such a peculiar situation, being so close to the ocean, that it just is, it's very difficult to balance affordability and, you know, in a view of the magnificent Pacific Ocean.
Great. So last question for me. My question is this. Recognizing in Morro Bay the significant financial constraints that the city faces and the need for potential new commercial economic development, how does that impact a planning commissioner's decision-making process and/or planning actions, in your opinion? And we'll start with Ron. Or does it?
Of course it impacts the decisions that you make, but as I said before, it becomes, it's cyclical. You can't break one segment out and try to fix that segment. It's a circle, it's a cycle, and it all has to work together. So when people see abandoned houses that have not been attended to for over a year, they start to think that, what's going on in this neighborhood? Or if they see a store that's been empty for six months or eight months, they say, "What's the economic condition of this community, of this neighborhood?" And it's all cyclical. And the planning board has to be able to, has to be able to investigate more than just public housing and housing the homeless and taking people with some kind of particular special needs and providing for them. They have to provide for the whole entity. And like I said, when people see abandoned homes and empty stores and trash piling up in the garbage cans on the weekend, they say, "Gee, why, you know, why can't they have a man here on Saturday or Sunday that give them off on Friday?" And it's a, it's a, it's a big deal. And it, like I said, it's cyclical. You can't break one segment out, housing or industry or utilities or anything else. It all works together.
Laurel?
I think it's a balancing act. The Planning, Planning Commission, of course, is part of that, council's part of that, the tourism efforts are part of that, and the Chamber of Commerce-type efforts. There's no one answer, and it's, it's not an easy thing. Morro Bay is a small city, and that's its charm, but it also means that it doesn't have lots of extra money to do things with, and so it has to be an effort, a multi-pronged effort.
Joe?
It definitely is a balancing effort. Because of the city's tough financial straits of late, and even without that, you really want to encourage economic opportunity and more businesses and business expanding. But very often, particularly with new businesses seeking to locate here, that comes up against, bounces up against other values. A developer or a businessman may want or need a higher height requirement or- A developer or a businessman may want or need a higher height requirement, or his idea of the appropriate architectural design may not exactly coincide with the community's sense of design guidelines. So you just, you have to sort of weigh these things and figure where you can compromise and where you cannot. And you certainly don't want to burden city government with additional expenses. You also, at least I have, you know, given some thoughts to what are relatively inexpensive ways to really encourage economic development. And I would very much like to see the Embarcadero, and for that matter, Morro Bay made more pedestrian-friendly, wider sidewalks, planning benches, perhaps one-way parking, things that are relatively inexpensive, which would make shopping in the areas an event. And historically, in other, particularly Southern Califor, Southern California communities, where that's been done, again, relatively inexpensively, tremendous boost in pedestrian traffic, and hence, the revenues by the businesses boarding those streets. That's what I, that's what I'd like to see. Oh, and one other thing. With respect to the power plant, I would, I would really like to see, not a developed plan, but what I would call a framework, which presents some of the things that the community would like to see in the, in the power plant, so that one, and inevitably, one will come, a very big developer's idea of what to do with that. We won't have to jump at that first thing because of the financial needs of the city. We will have something in place, which kind of tells them, this is what we'd like, so before you come to us, try and formulate your plan in a way that corresponds with our values as well.
Thank you. Well, that ends the questions, unless there are any clarifications that any of you have, and any questions from, from you folks at all? If not, go ahead and mark your ballot. We have one position. Fold it and move it to the left here, and we will give it to our clerk, who will tally it up and...
I disobeyed you, I didn't fold mine.
Now we know what you're going to vote for. She's going to announce it anyway. I should have looked at it before somebody else did.
Councilmember Davis voted for Ms. Barton. Councilmember Heller voted for Mr. Ingraffia. Councilmember McPherson voted for Mr. Ingraffia. And Mayor Heding voted for Ms. Barton. So, Mr. Ingraffia, you've been reappointed to a four-year term on the Planning Commission. And Ms. Barton, based on council comments earlier, you would be the alternate should a vacancy occur in the next several months.
Thank you all. Congratulations, Joe, and appreciate you guys being here. Don't forget, there are more opportunities that will come. With that, I'd like to invite up our Public Works Advisory Board applicants, Doug Rogers and Mike Whitlock. This is PWA, we have two vacancies, and same format. Welcome. It'd be great if we could get maybe 30 seconds to a minute of introduction, why you're interested in the Public Works Advisory Board, and just a little bit about your background. We'll start with you, Mr. Whitlock.
Thank you. My name is Mike Whitlock. I'm a civil engineer, registered civil engineer in the state of California, a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. I'm recently retired. I've worked 35 years in the engineering sector, most of that experience in the public sector. I've been a senior engineer at a county public works department, I've been a city engineer most recently. I was a director of construction management in Central Valley for a consulting firm, working on large freeway interchange projects. And we've owned our home in Morro Bay for several years now. My wife and I have both retired and have made this our home last year. And just looking to get myself plugged into the community and to share some of the experience that I have.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Rogers?
Hello. I'm a small business guy, I have two, two companies. One is in the plastic molding operation, and the other is a manufacturer of dry erase globes for geoscience. So my background really is in keeping a small business running. And I'm involved in all the maintenance and all the headaches of keeping machinery operating. So my, my experience is primarily just based on that, and of course, working with customers on new contracts and delivering what they expect, what the customer expects. I did serve on the water recycling facility advisory committee previously. And in that, I was fascinated to meet with Joe Mueller a number of times and literally review the 60% plans for the construction of the new plant. And that is my primary interest, in continuing what I've learned and hoping to, to help the city with a successful implementation and getting that plant operating.
Great, thank you. So Councilmember McPherson, you're up first. And why don't we start, now that we know you, I'll start with Doug. Doug?
Okay, well, you just mentioned that we just recently added to the PWA the technical aspects of the water reclamation facility, and we gave the financial reviewing, the quarterly reports to the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. And that's because we really have reached a point in that project where most of the major decisions have been made. We've selected a site, and the design build team awarded contracts and received designs up till a pretty significant high level of completion. So I just would like to have you tell me how you would see the PWA, or the Public Works Advisory Board, continuing with that responsibility of reviewing technical aspects of the project.
Well, there's plenty of reading. In this case, I wasn't particularly familiar with all the specific details, and that's why I see Joe Mueller as a wonderful resource, because he knows what's going on, and he's going to be intimately involved in that. And I would just imagine being, helping to monitor and ask questions about, even though the Finance Committee's going to be looking at the costs, and hopefully, there won't be any overruns, but that's going to have to be evaluated. The technical aspects are what is feeding, what would potentially feed any cost savings or cost overruns. And so I just, I just envision helping to monitor and to learn as much as I possibly can going forward, and making sure that that plant comes to fruition.
Mike?
I have been involved in a number of wastewater treatment plant projects, from feasibility, level reviews and studies, all the way through design and construction. Nothing of the magnitude of what the city of Morro Bay is about to build, but I have been involved in very large projects, too, freeway interchanges, high-speed rail. As a member of the Public Works Advisory Committee, I would see my role in that committee as being a resource. If staff, for instance, might have a budget issue or a contract change order or something like that, that they might bring to the committee to give us an opportunity to look at and provide some input, I could see that as being a possibility. I don't see myself as a staff member as somebody necessarily reviewing plans, as a member of the Public Works Advisory Committee, but again, somebody as a resource.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
And we'll start with Mike.
Yes. Mike, what do you think the city's Public Works Department's biggest challenge is this year?
Well, I'll say streets. Having been a city engineer and having responded to public's inquiries and complaints, if you will, about their streets or streets they travel, and having had the opportunity to live in Morro Bay for nearly a year now, I can see that, you know, the streets, in particular, the local streets, the minor streets, are not in the best of repair, so I can see that as a challenge. I know certainly the water reclamation facility is on the forefront, and I see that moving forward this year, and certainly being a priority for the Public Works Department. The sewage collection system, the water system, maintenance types of activities, and I've read through several minutes and watched some YouTube videos of prior Advisory Board meetings, and I know there are a whole host of issues that come to the board, including, you know, conditions of sidewalks and trails and pathways and the like.
Okay, Doug?
Well, of course, the whole implementation of the piping system, which is going to be an interruption on Quintana, it certainly ties in with what Mike just said about streets, because that's going to be an important way to upgrade, in effect, those corridors. I had asked, I had asked Joe about how are they going to control the traffic, you know, what's going to happen? Apparently, that's going to be up to the contractors that are actually going to be doing that work. They're going to, they're going to get feedback from the contractors on how they're going to direct traffic during those weeks when certain sections are torn up and all the support mechanisms are in place. So I'm going to have a lot of questions about that, because it's going to affect the business community, of course, and not to mention the citizens who are trying to get around. So I think the plant management, even though Eric Casares is going to be, is kind of the point man, I still think it's very important to keep on him and push to make sure that we are getting our money's worth.
Thank you. Councilmember Addis, we'll start with Mike, again.
Yeah, I've talked a little bit about future-ready infrastructure, and that's been a priority of mine, is to make sure that we keep our eye on future-ready infrastructure. And I'm wondering what that looks like to you and how you see the PWA moving that forward.
Sorry, I'm not, not sure, not sure I heard that correctly. What specific type of infrastructure?
Future-ready, so thinking of the scope of the infrastructure that our city has, and what it would mean to you if somebody said, we really want to have future-ready infrastructure. What that would bring up for you, and how you would see the PWA playing into that?
So certainly, city of the age of Morro Bay, I think, first off of the sewage collection system, and a lot of that pipe in the ground, I know in my area, in fact, I stopped and talked to a public works maintenance worker the other day, and found out that the sewer lines are actually the back property lines on our house, and he said they were placed in 1922. So there's a lot of city infrastructure, not only sewer, but I assume water mains, too, are quite old. And I think the city needs to have a capital improvement plan. I think that's a very important tool for a city, so you can plan and so you can budget. Revenues are difficult to come by for projects, but if it's a sewer or water project, it's a enterprise-type of fund, and there can be funds set aside for projects. But I think, most of all, you know, again, there needs to be a recognition on behalf of the city and even, you know, the residents and property owners, that the infrastructure is aging, and if it means, you know, harder sewer fee increases to pay for some of those, then that's, you know, that's a reality, that's something that may well have to happen.
Doug?
Well, I can't, I can't claim that I have a lot of knowledge about what a future-ready thing is, but what comes to mind, of course, is what are we going to do with the old plant site? The PG&E plant we've already mentioned today, and, you know, that's, that's a big question. And I think what Joe had said about having a vision of what we want to do with that, so that when and if proposals are, come to the city, we have an idea of what parameters we want. Of course, parks and access to parks. I think that's part of the answer to what you're, you're asking, I think. You know, just the development of the Tidlands Park is an exciting thing, I've just recently learned a little bit about the history of how that happened. And I think that we want to continue to think about what kind of parks do we want? And of course, the harbor, the dredging of the harbor, I don't know if that's Public Works or if that's the Harbor Commission, but that's an ongoing issue. So I'm, I'm just going to be, I'm just willing to help and learn about these things, I can't say I have answers for that.
Great. Councilmember Heller? We'll start with you again, Doug, this time.
Okay. Before I start, I want to thank both of you and everyone who has come to apply for these positions. In looking through the resumes and the qualifications, I'm generally very impressed with everyone who has stepped up or will be stepping up today, and I can't tell you how important this is to the city. And I want to, I want to thank you all for, for taking this step forward. So Doug, Public Works is the second most expensive basic service to the city, coming up, being paid for through the general fund, behind police only, in terms of the expense involved. Can you, can you tell me how you envision you might be able to help the city with budgeting and cost issues relative to, to the department?
Well, only, as I mentioned earlier, my background, just in, in maintaining manufacturing equipment. I mean, that's not exactly similar, but the process is the same, because you, I have to learn more about what are the ins and outs of the, what Public Works is spending the money on. I don't, I can't, I don't know that. But, and I'm sure there's a process now for developing the budget of that, of the Public Works Department. And it just, it seems to me, looking at what, what are we spending money on, and are there areas that we could improve? There really are a lot of new developments in, certainly in my industry, there's a lot of new technology that's coming along, and I don't know how that might apply to Public Works, but I know they have some very nice equipment. And I guess just scrutiny is about all I can say I could help with, since I'm not familiar with the details.
Thanks. Mike?
I think grants and loans are something that, that need to be pursued often, whether it's state or federal. There are a whole host of funding opportunities for, certainly for parks, but even for sewer and water projects. So it's, it's not free money, because it's, you know, it's money generated from taxes, but it certainly goes a long way at a city, and the city can use some funds to, you know, to match some of those grants. I think another one, it's not real popular, but it's assessment districts. The city of Tulare, when I was a city engineer there, we were looking, kind of testing the pulse of the public for streets, for the local streets in particular. If a, you know, certain area or location demanded or wanted, you know, a higher level of maintenance on their streets, then, you know, assessment districts could be set up to pay for that.
Thank you. And my question, last question, is, like some of the other crumbling infrastructure, our storm drain system is crumbling. We have no enterprise fund. The Impact Fund is literally devoid of any cap- devoid of any capital. My question is, how can we effectively plan for storm drain issues in the future without existing capital? And Doug, we'll start with you, maybe.
Well, I know, I know at Tahoe, they are spending a lot of money on storm drains, because they're trying to catch the sediments to prevent the lake from becoming cloudy. And I imagine that they've managed to capture a lot of state money for that. I don't know that for a fact. But what Mike just said about the potential for grants, I know the city's also very, so far has been very savvy on looking at the grants for the water treatment plant. And it seems to me that that would be a source of potential funding. I don't know exactly where they would be doing work on the storm drain system here. But the question is, how are we going to pay for this over the course of time? And it seems like we're going to need some help, unless there's such a thing as this assessment district, which I'm not familiar with that, but Mike is. So I don't have a good answer for that, other than I'm certainly willing to help look and research.
Thank you. And Mike?
Storm drain's a tough one. I know storm drain is a general funded budget or activity. And I think grants, low-interest loans, storm drain projects can tie into, at least for additional capacity in storm drain, tie in well with recreation and parks. If it's the storm drain lines, maybe not so much. That's a project that would require the pipe to be removed. I've done some projects at half the cost where the pipes are burst and you line the pipe so you can leave them in place, looking at those types of things. And then again, as we've talked about, assessment districts. If a project is bad enough, you know, and an area in particular needs a storm drain pipe or system rehab, then I think the public needs to be educated, the property owners in that area need to be educated that this is a real need. And something like that could oftentimes be successful to form or to pass an assessment district.
Great. Thank you. And that ends the questions. Any follow-up questions? None? Any questions of us? If not, we have two vacancies, two applicants, and same process.
This is an easy one. All five council members voted to appoint both Mr. Rogers and Mr. Whitlock to four-year terms on the Public Works Advisory Board.
Congratulations. Your sentencing is complete. Hey, thank you both for applying. It looks like we've got some great candidates, and we really appreciate you. Coming forward to assist the city. Look forward to working with you. Next up, I'd like to invite, let's see, we have one applicant for CFAC, our Citizens Finance Advisory Board. And let's see here, let me get my information.
Good afternoon.
And Tina.
Yes.
Tina Weiner.
Tina Weiner, go for it. Yeah.
I was going to be hesitant with that.
I'm hesitant anyway.
Welcome.
Thank you.
So same process, one candidate. And we'll just ask you to give a brief description of why you're interested and a little bit about your background, about a minute, and then we'll begin our questions.
Can everyone hear me? I'm interested because basically my background in business, nonprofit, profit, I mean, you read my resume. I know by experience that learning an organization comes much more effectively by learning it through its financials. So I have a natural instinct to understand the revenue and expenses of any organization that I would involve myself in and/or how it does its business. So honestly, I see this as kind of a sweet spot from a become-familiar-with city government. I have no experience in city government, so I don't bring that to the table. I have a great deal of experience in profit and loss. I owned my own company, a staffing company, high-tech staffing company. Also, I did a stint lobbying for a brief period for state government in the state of Nevada, which, while interesting unto itself for a lot of reasons, and I was mentored through that process, I discovered a great interest in government. And I spent a lot of time at the state legislature, regardless of my own bill. So as a now-retired citizen, and here almost two years, I have an interest in philanthropic, and I've volunteered before for like the parks and things like that. But I'm actually, my neighbor interested me in this position. The water treatment, huge project, interested me as a citizen of this community. Listening to those interviews has interested me more. Certainly, I overlooked this little brief thing, and I kind of looked at the budget. I see deficits coming. So I'm interested because I'm a citizen, and I do have business savvy. So I am ignorant of city government and all of its, how it really genuinely works, but I'm a quick study. So that's it, I guess.
Great. Good. Thank you. Councilmember Davis, start with you, sir. I only have one candidate, so I won't need to go back and forth, by the way.
I can sit over in this chair.
No, you can't do that. Go back and forth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any recommendations to attack the city's funding shortfalls?
No, you know, I mean, I think it's a reasonable question, but not necessarily am I prepared to answer a question like that. It's my understanding that it's coming as a result of what burdens a lot of other governments, which is CalPERS and retirement costs. And I may, if I'm mistaken in that, please correct me, but, you know, it's a legitimate expense, and I don't really know how the other city governments are dealing with it, or state government, for that matter. You guys raised a lot of questions in those previous interviews with planning and public works and affordable housing. And, you know, it just raised a lot of questions to me about, in fact, how do we get revenue beyond tax, you know, property tax? And certainly, I noted that Public Works, you know, gets less money than police, and we need police, but $3 million for Public Works doesn't seem like a lot when we look at issues you raised, like storm sewers, as in not funded, and happen to live on a court who's collapsed recently. So I know there's a lot of mixing of things, but no, I don't. What I would do is want to understand that. I mean, as a resident of Morro Bay, I note things by just being business-oriented. I note that our community is, people, businesses come and go in the main part of town. I'm curious as to why that happens. I note that we invested, or somehow money was invested in the Embarcadero. There's a big new beautiful building, and the old little boat thing came down on one of the buildings down there. And I see this, and I'm wondering, what does that really mean in terms of viability? Who's really behind it? How will that help or not help fund anything in the city at large? Is it, you know, so, I mean, I have a lot of questions that I don't have answers to, but I'd be happy to analyze or get involved or read about or study, you know, if that was something that made sense. And it seems to me it does, even on the advisory committee, that if you're in finance, that you would want to know how to make money, frankly, and/or save money, or not cost excess money. So, other than applying those principles, I have no specific answer.
Councilmember Addis?
I know you've mentioned the water reclamation facility that is coming. What do you see as the intersection, if any, between the Finance Advisory Committee and the water reclamation facility?
Well, what little bit I looked at, it looks like there's, and again, forgive me, because I'm not completely, the minutes from the last meeting aren't up until Thursday, I guess, but apparently there's some review of that in terms of, I don't know exactly where those lines cross. It has to be one of the largest projects this city has undertaken, I'm assuming, based on the pure numbers and certainly the political, you know, brouhaha that I've seen since I came here. And so, based on the size of the project and the potential complexity of the project, throw politics and EPA and any other things outside, just the real honest-to-goodness managing of a large, complex project, you know, I think that, I don't know that the advisory committee has this role, and I don't want to assert that I should take some role that doesn't exist. But it seems to me that real oversight of contracts, real understanding of terms and conditions of loans, I mean, anything that, timelines and timeframes, where milestones may overlap, like, you know, I looked at something, and I don't know where now, but it looked like the project plan for the facility is, there's three parts to the total project, and it looked like part of it. I couldn't tell if it was sequential, that we had to build the facility, do that infrastructure stuff, and then the reclamation, or if there's overlap. But anywhere where a project can be obviously managed to start on time, finish on time and within budget, presumably that would be the role of the, or a role of the advisory committee, or if they need assistance, whoever's watching that. So I don't know if that answers your question. Yeah.
Councilmember Heller?
Welcome, Tina.
Thank you.
You retired here a couple of years ago.
Yep, coming up on two years.
Okay. Thank you very much for moving here. We have lots of citizens advisory committees, lots of nonprofits, all kinds of different ways to get involved in the community. Why did you choose the CFAC as your?
As my, as a point of entry?
Yes.
Well, honestly, I've been sitting back and kind of sitting on my hands and not volunteering, partly because I have recently retired. And honestly, I felt overstimulated at the idea. And I've been involved in nonprofit as part of retirement, and when I wasn't retired also. And so I wasn't sure, really, what I might want to do. And one of my neighbors is on the committee, on the advisory committee, and he, and I talk, you know, we talk over dinner or whatever, and that interested me. And as I said, when I sat down, as I started to look at it, I thought, well, honestly, with my, the way I look at things, my brain is business-oriented. I can't help it. And so naturally, I start gravitating towards financials. So I thought, interesting, great stepping stone, if I did have any interest in perhaps running for city council or any other opportunity within the city, or county, perhaps, I don't even know, I might, that this would be a great way to, again, familiarize myself as a citizen with city government and what does that really mean, understanding the responsibilities of everybody and understanding what that means, you know, and where does a citizen add contribution, right? So it just seemed like somehow, the more I thought about it, I actually wasn't going to do it. The more I thought about it, I thought about it over Christmas. I thought, no, you know, I'm getting more and more interested. And I guess because I have a vested interest in the community just by being here. I really like Morro Bay. I mean, I actually like its charming sort of waifish, you know, state in some respects. And I have empathy with people who want to see it not change. And I'm concerned about that balance, you know, as a citizen. What is the right answers to all of that? And how do we stay viable as a community and embrace change, whatever that is? So definitely, from experience, living in the state of Nevada, we built out on 40 acres. We thought we were in the middle of nowhere. 20 years later, we're within 10 miles of chaos. And I didn't pay any attention to city planning or county planning at the time. So actually, I got wiser, if you will, as a resident, to pay attention. Yeah.
Councilmember McPherson?
Thank you. Great. Well, as you know, adding the review of the quarterly financial reports of the water reclamation facility is a new responsibility that we have added to the CFAC. I would like you to just talk about the role generally of what you see, the role for CFAC, not only with respect to the water reclamation facility, but with respect to the budgets and financial reports and your comfort level with understanding that and knowing the difference between business finance, which you're familiar with, and municipal finance. So if you could just-
Which I'm not familiar with.
Talk about the role that you would see for CFAC in the WRF and in all of the other responsibilities of the advisory committee.
Well, I'm not sure that I didn't answer that, I guess, but maybe I'm missing something there in that question.
Well, yeah, I was just curious to know, some of what you got into seemed, well, go ahead. If you just want to tell me what you see as the role of CFAC, that would be answered the question.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at it here, and I see what is stated as the role of CFAC. And so from my perspective, that seems like a reasonable role. I know that there's Measure Q is also part of this. And I, I mean, I have a lot of questions, honestly. So if appointed, I would start to be doing more due diligence, because I don't understand some of the things that I'm looking at in terms of, for example, I, we've talked about Public Works earlier, and then there's Measure Q, but I'm confused, because I don't understand what part of Measure Q goes to Public Works. Does any of it or none of it? Because it looked like a Public Works thing to me, based on what little bit of research I did on it. So I find myself at a loss to answer your questions from a background perspective. My natural instinct would be to go learn, interview, study, read, definition of terms, get to know Jennifer, you know, so that I would have a larger understanding and could make a better contribution. But to me, it says advisory. So advisory suggests advisory. We make recommendations or inform advice through a quorum, present it to our chair, and chair somehow presents it to council, and council does or does not take that advice. So I don't know that there's any other role, except if I was to step aside as a citizen and come in front of the council, let's say, you know, because I'm also on CFAC, and maybe I have an opinion about something, on something that's part of my committee work, that I would then have to take my role as a citizen and bring it here. I do understand that differentiation. And I probably would, I could imagine me doing that. You know, I could imagine me learning enough to be able to step aside and go, okay, wait a minute, now I got to put on my citizen hat. I'm curious, you know, I have a question for the council directly.
Okay. Thank you.
So my question's this. If property taxes, TOT taxes, and sales tax are not enough to fund the ongoing needs of a city like Morro Bay, what ideas do you have for new revenue sources that might improve the city's finances?
So I'm assuming that means no tax levying, as in increase of tax?
Didn't say that.
Okay. All right. So I don't, I believe our sales, I'm not sure our sales tax is 7-point-something percent. It's, I mean, nobody wants to be taxed, let's face it. But in reality, right? Most of us are like, uh-oh, cost of living goes up, et cetera, everything costs more. Everything's costing more as it is. But, and again, I don't know how much revenue you may generate from any of these special events that I see that go on through the city, you know, all the festivals and all the different events. But, and there, wasn't there a bicycle touring thing that too? And I'm not one of those, so I don't really know, but I think, didn't I read that? That's not coming through here again? It raises curiosity to me why, what happened? Are they going somewhere else? Were they disappointed? My point being, is there an opportunity from a recreational perspective to attract any more source of revenue to Morro Bay the town, and whether or not we can even support that through our infrastructure? I don't know. I've heard, and this is complete hearsay, merchants in- I don't know, I've heard, and this is complete hearsay, merchants in town make a claim that, and/or merchants on the Embarcadero, that's a difference in how they are taxed, or what their costs are, and how that does or doesn't come to the city, I don't know. So, I don't think I can answer your question in a very comprehensive way, other than look at whatever any other city is doing to address these very issues, see what our strengths are as a community, and to, and take very seriously into consideration any need we may have to raise taxes, and to not request such unless it's imperative, and to make sure it's communicated clearly, so that we get support from our community to keep our city viable. And I presume that we want a police department and a fire department, and I understand we don't have those in some of these other communities. So, I don't know if everybody understands that, you know, that we may be unique and small.
Good. Thank you, Tina, I appreciate that. Any follow-up questions from council, no? Any questions of us that you have?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, so you have one person, one vote? By the way, if anybody has the answer to that last question, I had you send them my way, please.
Well, actually, I do have a question, I'm sorry. It's not maybe an answer, but it is a question. You know, in the big cities, like Silicon Valley, where density, you know, all of a sudden, everyone's going up instead of out, you know, they're taking the old strip malls, and they're repurposing, and they're having to go up, and they're building all the little stores and things, and businesses underneath. It was a thought that crossed my mind earlier, when you were interviewing the other applicants. In Morro Bay, when we deconstruct for some reason, you know, if there's a legitimate teardown, maybe of an old restaurant, or some building, are we at all obliged to consider going up and placing housing above that, and the businesses beneath it? And is that at all appealing at all to this city, or has it been thought about, or does it too dramatically change the city plan?
Yes and no. Yes and no. It's maintain the unique character of the community, yet facilitate commercial and economic development to meet the needs of the future. And it's always a balance between the two. So, there's some appetite, I think, for that. On the other side, there may not be so much appetite for it.
Right, because it would change the town too much, yeah.
And we do have zoning requirements that limit the height of buildings.
Okay, I wondered about that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Congratulations, Ms. Sweeney, you've received the full support of the council.
You got a point. Very good. Next up, thank you again, Tina, for being here. Appreciate your willingness to come forward. We have Recreation and Parks Commission, and I want to invite up Kevin. Kevin, come on up, or I should say, come on down, as they say. Kevin Carroll, come on down. We have one vacancy, one applicant, term for your term ending 1/31/24. 30 seconds or so about you, Kevin, and your background, and why you want to continue on the Parks and Rec Board, Commission, I should say.
Hi, my name is Kevin Carroll, and I have been a member of the Park and Rec Commission for four years. I'm currently the chair, and I enjoy it. I enjoy what we're doing, I enjoy being involved in the different programs that we have here in Morro Bay. And so, when my term became, was coming to an end, I wanted to re-up just, just fine. I do work full-time, so I was a little late here today. I work at CMC, I'm a teacher, lived here for almost 20 years, raised my son, my wife, and I moved here in 2001. And so, this is our home, and the recreation and parks aspect of it is one of the nice things that we do here.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Let's see, where do I, where am I starting? I'm back to Councilmember Heller, start us off again. Hey, thanks, Jeff.
Kevin, thanks for coming. I'm not too, I'm not very familiar with, with the advisory committee for Rexon Park, and since you've been on it for a few years now, could you just tell me a little bit about the kinds of issues you talk about?
Sure. We aren't a real group of decision-makers. We are an advisory committee, we listen and we support what is going on here in the city, and we work with Kirk and the others, Angela, to give advice, to come out and be at the different events that we do, and anything that, that they might need, we would be ready to help. I like to meet with Kirk every now and again, and talk about how things are going, and what we need to know about, and, like that.
Councilmember McPherson?
Okay, well, since you have been on the board for a while, what do you see as the major accomplishments that the Rec and Parks Board has done? Can you name a few things that you think you've actually achieved?
Oh, sure. I think that, you know, it was nice to be involved in the, the rolling out of, like, our pool, and allowing, or getting, making sure that, that the city is, the people of the city are able to use it, as well as the students at Morro Bay High. When I first got on here, there was an issue about pickleball, we had a rolling rink, I remember this quite, quite well, because it was one of the first things that I was involved in, and we had a big group here, talking about the rolling, rolling rink, and they were very persuasive, but, you know, they weren't Morro Bay citizens. They were people in the broader community that enjoyed Morro Bay, but we need to remember that the Rec and Park Commission is helping and making sure that the cities, citizens of Morro Bay are taken care of. We're helping both kids, and adults, and the elderly, and making sure that, that we take care of ourselves.
Great. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you for re-upping.
Thanks, Ray.
I, I have a soft place in my heart for our recreation services, and I really appreciate your-
Well, you're here all the time, you're always, you're always with us. I mean, he comes all the time, yes.
But my question is, do you see any holes in our recreation services program, any unmet needs that we should be addressing?
No, no, I think that we make sure that we're on top of things, and we're, ask the community to come and tell us what they're interested in, and we're, have a lot of good activities for, like I said, both seniors and kids, kids' club and other things. I think we're doing just fine.
All right, I, I don't disagree.
Councilmember Addis?
Yeah, no, I'm so glad you applied again, thank you so much. I also have a soft spot with two kids who went through all of the sports programs, and then one who became a referee, and it was his first job, so it's done wonders for our family. And I just recently saw an article that the Morro Bay Bike Park was being vandalized, and may not be able to stay open, because there was having trouble there, and I'm just wondering ideas that you have, I know you deal with, the Rec and Park, you know, thinks about public spaces a lot, not that the commission would, you know, take on anything there, but-
Right, and we're not public works, so we can't do a lot of the things that you would-
But if you have ideas, like, given your other experiences-
Well, that's something that we could, we could publicize, and we could see, that's a very, we've enjoyed the park, my son, and I've enjoyed the park, so it is something that the members of Morro Bay do enjoy, and we get vandals in there, we have to ask our community what we should do, and rally support. I don't think that that's something that would need to be shut down, I think it's a good, a good facility. I would ask for help. Sure.
Kevin, appreciate your service and your, your great interest in Park and Recs, and your leadership as well. My only question is, realizing that the city's in significant financial straits, so to speak, looking at deficits in the future with regard to our tenure plan, realizing that recreation is extremely important to the community, for all age groups, from the small ones to us older ones, how do you balance the current subsidies with the financial deficits that the city's experiencing, and, and what's your response to how much subsidy should continue?
I think as much subsidy as possible. It's, it's one of those things that is sorely needed. Our kids need to have a place to go, it's certainly something you don't want to ignore. The, the revenue, the, it's, it's something that we should make sure that we are balancing, you've talked about balance here a lot. I don't really have a clean answer for that, but it's certainly something that shouldn't be ignored, it should be something that is part of the process, to make sure we can do as much as we can for our people.
Great, thank you very much. With that, one vacancy. We'll fill out our ballots real quick, like?
Okay.
Congratulations, Kevin, you've received the full support of the council to reappoint for your term.
Appreciate your service, Kevin, and look forward to continuing to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, council, we're going to move to the vacation rental representatives first. I'll invite you to come up. I do want to clarify one piece of business. Mr. Finch, Greg Finch, who has applied for reasons that are personal related to health issues, is unable to make the interview this evening. He would like to continue to be considered, even though he's not able to be here. Per our policy, candidates not appearing for interview before the city council will be considered for appointment, only upon a finding of the city council by motion, the absence arose from excusable neglect or personal difficulties. I interacted with this applicant, and feel that he meets this policy, and therefore would make the motion that we allow him to remain on the ballot, even though he's not here.
I see.
So, we have a first by, a motion by council, by mayor heading, and second by, who, where was it, a tie, or was it? Tie goes to the runner, which, do you run? Okay, you don't run, then both, we'll say Councilmember Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So, we will have three applicants, but two to interview. Welcome, Teresa Ennis and Terry Frank. I got those right, right? And which one is which?
I actually go by Terry Ennis.
Oh, okay.
And the only two-
Got it, I'll scratch out the Teresa.
Yeah.
And you're, and you go by Terry?
Uh-oh.
You go by Terry? Okay, good, perfect. Well, welcome, and appreciate you being here. Again, about a minute or so, your background, and why you're interested in applying for this position on our advisory board.
I was Terry.
Oh, sorry, green button, I forgot to tell you guys, yeah.
There we go.
And close to the mic, if you can.
Oh, good. My name's Terry Ennis, and my husband and I have owned Pacific Heating and Sheet Metal here in town since 1989. So, I am a business owner, I'm a real estate broker also, I'm retired from that now, but we own two properties here in Morro Bay. One is our main residence, and the other across the street is a vacation rental, which, from time to time, has been where our daughters live, daughter-grandchild, and now it's a vacation rental. At some point, it will probably be my husband's parents' home, so, and I'm trying, I guess, I'm interested in the position, because I think that tourism is so important to Morro Bay, seeing that through all of our, my aspects, because of being a business, and I just want to be, you know, if I can be of any help, that would be great.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. And Terry, excuse me, yeah, Terry, Terry and Terry, this is going to be tough. Okay, I'm going to go this way, Terry Ennis.
And I'm Terry Frank.
Terry Frank, see, I'm already confused, Terry Frank.
It's okay, I'd be confused, too.
Left, right.
I have lived in Morro Bay now for six years, I've lived on the central coast for 13 years, and I call it my little slice of paradise, like we all do, and just love the neighborhoods, and I think what I can add to, I have a vacation rental currently in Cayucus, and I started the business a year and a half ago, and I'm very detail-oriented, extremely detail-oriented, sometimes I get into the weeds, but other times, it comes in very handy, because I look at a lot of things down to the very nth degree, and sometimes that works, and sometimes it doesn't, and I don't know if that will work in this type of setting or not. I've never been involved in city government, but I'm interested in it, because I think, like Terry does, you know, tourism is huge for us, and we have such a special little place here, the little city, and I think there's a balance between neighborhoods and businesses, and being able to fund our city. I think that's super important, and I think that with my vacation rental currently in Cayucus, the things that I've learned, the things what I've screwed up on, I think that I can provide a lot of good ideas, best practices, things, things like that. So, and it is a fine line, because you've got, you know, neighborhoods that are close together, and how do you mitigate having, you know, vacation renters coming and going, coming and going, and all, and not wreaking havoc on the neighborhoods with noise, et cetera, but at the same time, having owners like us, who want to have a business, to be able to help our city, you know, with taxes, TOT, and all of that, and to be able to give back to our community, and to also, I think one of the things that I love best about my job, I call my job, is that how much joy I give my guests, you know, and, and being able to say, hey, you know, these are some of my favorite restaurants, whether it's in Cayucus and Morro Bay. You know, I have different templates that I use and stuff that, and I give my own personal touch, every single, every single guest, so I think there's, there's a lot on both sides that need to be taken into consideration.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McPherson, you're up.
Okay. Thank you both.
Start with Ms. Ennis. I'm going to do it that way.
All right, well, as you may or may not know, we have a, an ordinance in place currently that limits the number of vacation rentals to 250, and we have appointed an ad hoc committee that's going to hopefully come up with some new regulations. I'd just like your opinions on both the 250 cap that we currently have in place, and also on what you think the city needs to do to further regulate vacation rentals.
I really like the fact that we have the cap, definitely. I would like to see more policing, if you will, for the illegal vacation rentals. I don't think it's fair to the hotels and motels in the area. We don't want to put them out of business, their business is just as viable and important as, you know, what we have going on. So, I do think that that is really important. And I guess, if, at least if the person is operating illegally, they should be still responsible for the TOT and the other taxes. That's why we have these going on, and that's really important, that those taxes are collected, and make it fair across the board.
Thank you. Ms. Frank?
I also agree that there should be a cap. I also agree with Terry that those folks that are running them illegally, I believe that if it's illegal, then they should be no longer able to continue running the business. I think most people know that vacation rentals-
no longer able to continue running the business. I think most people know that vacation rentals have been around a long, long, long time now, Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera. And I think that the illegal businesses, I think you know that you're doing it illegally. You know, you're making sure that you're getting cash oftentimes and, you know, not giving back to the community. That need, that we desperately need to have the funding just for all the different projects that were talked about earlier. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Yes, and I think.
Starting with Ms. Frank.
Ms. Frank this time, yes. Wait, which?
That's me.
Okay. The one that last spoke.
Frank murder.
Yes, okay.
That's the one we started.
Can you explain your vision of the role of the short-term residents representative on the T-Bid Board?
I think the role would be an advisory role where we can, where I can give my opinions based on my experience of what I have already seen with my Cayucus vacation rental. And I think that there's things that can be done. And I don't know how far you can go into with government things, but there's certain things that can be done that help mitigate issues in neighborhoods. You know, if you have a team where you have contracts, rental agreements, that are really well-done and put together so that the neighbors are thought about as well in those contracts, so that there isn't the divisiveness that can happen. So I think it's an advisory role from our perspective and also taking into account your neighbors. Because in my neighborhood where we are, you know, a lot of us are very close, not only in proximity, but just as friends and neighbors, helping each other out. So I want to keep that.
And Ms., oh, yes, Ennis.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat the question? I got so involved with what she was saying.
Sure. Explain your vision of the role of the short-term rental representative on the T-Bid Board.
Oh, okay. Yes, thank you. I think it would be nice if you can, as a vacation rental owner, possibly bring other ideas and vision of what the tourists want to see, what are they looking for, what kind of questions are they asking as far as amenities here or what they're basically looking for. I will be in a kind of unique perspective. My husband and I are going to retire here in about a year. And so we're going to start traveling in our small RV. And our main goal is Small Town USA is what we're going to be traveling to and going nuns at a time. And it'd be interesting to see what other small towns are doing as far as their tourism goes and how are they drawing the tourists in. So I think I'd be able to bring that to the table too of, let's get some maybe new, fresh ideas. Won't hurt.
Great. Councilmember Addis?
Yeah, I think the issue of VRs has been one of the more contentious ones outside of the water reclamation facility. This one seems to really get people engaged and involved. And I know there was a lot of discussion about should VRs even be included in the T-Bid and the tax and all of that. So what's your approach to that conflict resolution or just approach to engaging in this, knowing the conflict that exists?
My personal opinion is that vacation rental definitely should be paying what the hotels are paying. I see as a business owner's perspective, we shouldn't be putting them out of business. That's not okay. And we think should be on equal playing field. So we shouldn't be able to undercut their rates by paying less taxes. That's not fair to them. So we, all, every visitor here, some people like to stay in a home and some people do live at hotels. So we don't want to ding the hotel owners. That's not fair. So I'm totally on board with whatever the taxes Morro Bay has decided are necessary. They're necessary across the board.
Ms. Frank?
I am on the other side of the fence. I think that vacation rental owners, they don't have, and I think I said this in a city council meeting, they don't have, you know, eight to 22 rooms to provide. So my thinking around that was that we should be able to have maybe one to one and a half percent, two at the very most, because we don't have that revenue coming in as they do. So that has always been my feeling around that.
Good. Councilmember Heller?
Thank you both for coming. By the way, I think very highly of Pacific Heating and Sheet Metal. Excellent company.
Good, thank you.
So the current ordinance prohibits realtors from selling properties that have a vacation rental license as part of their advertising. But we see it in papers all the time. How would you deal with that infraction of the ordinance?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, sure. The current ordinance, the vacation rental license does not go with the property if it's sold. But we continually see ads, big ads, in our local papers where realtors advertise properties with a vacation rental license. So how would you advise dealing with that?
Phew, that's a good question. Kind of see both sides. I can see both sides of the coin, actually. Because if you've invested in your home to make it a vacation rental and then you decide that you're gonna maybe move up, you know, and sell your home and move somewhere else here or somewhere else, that that extra income would help. And you've invested quite a bit of money, I would assume, I know I have, in my Morro Bay home, although I haven't started my business here. That is what I'm hoping to do. On the other side of this issue, if the ordinance is in place and they're not supposed to be advertising that, I have issues with that. So I'm kind of, I'm sitting right in the middle of the fence and I'm not sure really how to answer, answer the question. I just feel that there's a little bit of, on both sides, I can see both sides. So I don't know how to answer it clearly.
I think as a real estate broker, I'm kind of familiar with false advertising, if you will, is when it comes to agents. And that would be, you know, come under the headline of ethics. So it's easy enough to go to the Scenic Coast Association and tell them that this is the ad, this is the agent, this is the ordinance, stop. And that agent can be written up and come in front of the ethics committee and be reprimanded. That's in place already. They shouldn't be doing that. So, and other, it's again, being fair across the board. For the agents who don't do that, but could, it's not, they're being punished by the agents who are doing it and shouldn't.
Good. And both of my questions were asked. I had a second question and a first, so I'll forego another question and not torture you further. Counsel, we have three individuals voting for one to fill a four-year term ending 1/31/24.
Davis voted for Terry Ennis. Councilmember McPherson voted for Terry Ennis. Councilmember Heller voted for Terry Ennis. And Mayor Heading voted for Greg Finch. So, since you've been appointed to a four-year term on the T-Bid Advisory Board, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you both for coming today. Appreciate you and there'll be other opportunities. Okay, well, moving on in the interest of time. Chris, come on up. I know you've been waiting a long time. Appreciate that. We have the T-Bid hotelier position. There are two vacancies. We have one applicant for a four-year term ending 1/31/24. And welcome. Chris, we'll just ask you to briefly introduce yourself as we have done with the rest of folks. And the green light means you're live.
First, I'd just like to thank you guys. I don't mind being here for this. I actually learned a lot. It's fascinating. It's, every one of these committees and everybody's here, they're, though they're separate entities, they all have to work together for the common good. And I saw all the intersection and crossing points from each person speaking. But quickly on myself, Chris Costeca, my wife Cindy and I bought the Astero Inn on the Embarcadero a little over two years ago. I sat in front of this board a year ago to take the interim position, having no idea what I was doing, still learning how to be a hotelier and had no idea what T-Bid was doing. I was asked to be on. I thought I'd give it a go. A year later now, I may or may not know what I'm doing as a hotelier, but I pretty much understand T-Bid. It was not anywhere near what I thought it was. Not saying it's better or worse, but it wasn't what I thought. And now for this four-year term, I might be able to give more to the board than I have in this past year now that I understand the workings of it. So thanks for having me here.
Great, welcome. And Councilmember Davis, we'll start with you, sir.
Okay. I ran out of questions after four, so I'm going to ask you the same question I asked the short-term rental. What is your vision of the role of the short-term rental representative on the board?
For the VRs you're talking about? You're talking about the VR. Okay, so their role will be the same as all the rest of us. I keep it very simple. Essentially, there's revenues that are going to be generated via VRs or the hotels. Those funds are coming to this board. And then it's basically our job to figure out the best way to use those funds. And I think no matter how they're used, if they're used on events, if they're used for marketing, either one, it's, I put it all under marketing. Basically, the T-Board is advising how to best market Morro Bay to the masses, to bring people in, in two specific ways. One, to bring them in for events so that they come to Morro Bay, they see Morro Bay, they've never been here before, they fall in love with it, and they become a customer forever. The second way is to just create through marketing and images how nice this place is, so that when people are thinking of doing a vacation, be it the central coast, be it California, that we're on their radar. Oh, man, I've heard about that Morro Bay place. I've seen an article. I saw an ad. I saw that there's this crazy otter that's doing things in the bay. Maybe we should check that place out. So we have to do, that's, will be their role and our role to figure out how best to market Morro Bay.
Councilmember Addis?
My question is more your opinion. And so thank you for being here. It's not really coming from a place of judgment. But as a hotel owner and someone on the T-Bid who deals with the workforce, if there was like one wish that you had that the Morro Bay Council would do, what else could we do to support your business, to support the business of other hoteliers like yourself?
And again, we're all thinking more than just hoteliers now, right? We're thinking just.
A little bit closer to the mic.
My question really was for hoteliers.
Okay.
Like, what could city council do, you know, we could do a lot. So just like one thing that we could do to continue to support the hoteliers specifically.
Very easy answer for that. I know it's not simple because again, it's money and everything costs money. But I would love to see the Embarcadero cleaned up. I think we are competing against every other coastal community. I too love our vibe here, but at the same time, I think, you know, wider sidewalks, clean sidewalks, pedestrians. It gets very crowded in the Embarcadero and loses some of the charm, I think, at times. So I would like to see the Embarcadero cleaned up. I have crazy ideas with one-way street and a wide road. And when I was here a year ago, I spoke about that, the Temecula, which is our part-time hometown. We now split between here and Temecula. Eventually, that has to change if I get my way. But they did sidewalks and they did them phenomenally. And it changed pedestrian traffic and it changed the vibe of the entire down, old town of Temecula. And I'd love to see that for Morro Bay and the Embarcadero.
In the mic.
I just, I remember you bringing that up last year.
Yes.
And it got me thinking about what else we need. So thank you.
Hasn't changed.
Yeah.
Councilmember Heller?
Chris, thanks for stepping up here. Appreciate it. You'd mentioned in your introductory remarks that you thought T-Bid was going to be this, and it was actually something different. Can you explain, tell me a little bit more about that?
I had thought that T-Bid probably had more abilities, like Ms. Addis said, that we could say, hey, I want to, let's just clean up the Embarcadero and let's go. Let's make it happen. You know, I thought it was a idea, get it done kind of place. And that's not it. It's more how to market. I've learned that it's really about, we're, our job is to bring transients, tourist, that's a better term, but tourists into Morro Bay. That's really the job, how to best and most efficiently work with the tourism department to get that done.
Councilmember McPherson?
Well, thank you. I'm glad you reapplied. And I have watched some of the T-Bid meetings. And so I really don't have any further questions for you at this point. And in the interest of time, I'm going to forego one.
Chris, I too thank you for your service. One question for you. What one thing would you advise the whole T-Bid Board that they could do to improve their efficiency and their operation? Just one idea.
I probably don't have one at this point. Maybe by the end of this term I will, as I go further along. I like what we do. I think we, well, one thing we could do, speaking to me personally, is to be a little more prepared in advance, to have a vision coming in instead of ideas coming out of the meetings. And that's me personally. Everybody else on the board may be doing that. And that might be something where I need to improve.
Great point. Thank you. With that, we have one, well, actually, we have two vacancies, one applicant. And so give us a minute to just fill out this complex form and we'll be done. Thank you, Dana.
Congratulations, Chris. You've received full support to be reappointed for a four-year term to the T-Bid. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for your service. Thanks for coming out. We appreciate it. And keep those Temecula ideas coming. Appreciate you. With that, we will adjourn. It is 5:17. We'll reconvene at 5:30 PM for the next meeting.